My clock says six o'clock, so I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would please stand and recite the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Mayor Bowman. President, thank you. We do have a quorum. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome Board of Aldermen. It's good to see everybody this evening. We do not have any ceremonial matters, so I will ask the city administrator if you've had any agenda request forms for public participation this past week.
No, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, can we have a little bit of ceremonial, madam?
Sure.
Would you come to the podium down here with these things?
He's got sticks.
Uh-oh.
He's got a stick.
He's got sticks.
Well, it depends on if you're going to use it.
These old dry council meetings are not good for some people, so let's lighten it up. My memory serves me, the Bostons and the Bowman's met about a decade and a half ago at First Baptist Church.
Yes.
And I think it was on Easter Sunday morning.
That's probably true.
Yeah. And then about nine years ago, you were involved in a fireside chat at my house.
That's true also.
Yeah. And you've got a fresh set of eyes that none of us had seen before. And you have served this community for eight years now. And the scriptures tell us this, iron sharpens iron; one person sharpens another. And this is just my opinion, but I think it sharpens the whole community. You have done wonders. What I have done here is fixed a couple of walnut walking sticks, one for you, that says Mayor Boom. Now, that is a Harrisonville walnut tree.
Oh.
Now, that won't get you a cup of coffee anywhere else. But that buckskin grip is a Missoura deer.
Oh, heaven.
Now, the crew that I was with when that was hunted said I ugly'd that deer to death, and I can't disagree with that. Now, I know that the first first dude isn't here, and here's one for him.
Oh.
Now, let's give him something to gossip about.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. I'm going to leave these up here for y'all to see after the meeting.
I forgot to look in so special.
I couldn't tell you about that one.
Okay, well, y'all pulled one on me there. It's like when Jerry pulled it on me when we celebrated my 40th birthday, and he held a surprise birthday party for me. He still brags about that, and that was a lot of years ago. If I could ask you, please, to silence your cellphones at this point if you haven't already done so, and we'll move on with the approval of the minutes. First of all, the minutes of the regular meeting of the board, March 20th. Those were available in your packet. If you've had a chance to review them, I'll entertain a motion for their approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner, with a second from Alderman Davidson. All in favor of the approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. The minutes of the work session, March 20th, 2023, also were in your packet. If you've had a chance to review them, if there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Franklin, with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor of the approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. Moving on to the agenda items, we'll start with Council Bill 32.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the appointment of Paul Menching to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Menching is in the audience. Good evening, Paul. I think everybody knows Paul. He is a servant at heart. All you have to do is ask him if he would do something, and he always says yes. He's retiring as school superintendent, and so we wanted to give him something else to do. So, we had a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission who now works for the City of Harrisonville. That's Barrett Welton. He now works under Christina in the Codes Department. So, as such, he had to resign from planning and zoning. So, I reached out to Paul and asked if he would serve in that capacity, and he's agreed to do so. So, I confidently bring his appointment to you, and I would entertain a motion for that approval.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson, with a second from Alderman Milner, to approve the appointment of Mr. Menching to Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll take a roll call.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 32 is approved and becomes Resolution 2023-10. Thank you, Paul, for serving again in another capacity. Council Bill 33.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the appointment of Joseph Parkhurst to the Enhanced Enterprise Zone Board.
Thank you. Mr. Parkhurst is also in the audience. There he is, for those of you that don't know him. Joe reached out to me quite some time ago and said, you know, I would like to know if I can plug in somehow to help the city. And it's taken us a little while to find an appropriate slot for him. But now that he's coming as Assistant Superintendent for the Harrisonville School District, we reached out to him again and said, we've got a spot for you. So, Joe has agreed to serve the city on the Enhanced Enterprise Zone Board. And so, that board is full now, and we're glad that Joe is going to join us on there. So, I, again, confidently bring his appointment to the board, and I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff, with a second from Alderman Turner. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 33 is approved and becomes Resolution 2023-11. Council Bill 34. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Council Bill 34.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri amending park board regulations.
Thank you. Mr. Rattler?
Yes. Madam Mayor and Board, as you all recall from the last meeting, it was a discussion to have a good representation of different entities within the community for the park board, and that with all the changes that is going on with the Wall Street project and the baseball complex out there, to make sure that, going forward, that those representations are represented on that board as well. So, staff, with the consent that the board had brought to us about bringing this at the next meeting, took that ordinance and bringing it forward for you all tonight for your consideration, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that about your next park board meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if the board doesn't mind if we could just do the first reading tonight, that way it'd give me opportunity to bring this up to the park board, that kind of should tell them what's going on and field any questions they may have, so.
Okay. Awesome. Any discussion from members of the board?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman?
You know, I know we had a discussion in the work session last week. There's still some unanswered questions and some processes that I don't necessarily feel comfortable with. So, when the time is right, I would like to make a motion to be able to table this until further, until another meeting, so that way we could have some further discussion. And also, I think there was going to be some discussions. I thought initially it was going to be prior to, maybe it's going to be after with Grant and the board members. But I would still, at the appropriate time, I would like to make that motion to table it.
Any other discussion?
Well, don't know that we need to table it, do we? I mean, we can still do the first reading, because we're just going to do the first reading tonight, right?
Okay, there's a motion to table the discussion until a later meeting. So, first of all, we'd need to know if there's a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, now we can have discussion.
Oh, okay. So, but we don't, that's what I was saying, because Grant wants us to wait, just do the first reading tonight, not the second, which gives us time between now and the next meeting if there's questions or things like that. I'd hate to see this tabled, I'm telling you, because I'm excited about this. I think it's a great move for our Parks Department, especially with where we're going with all the things that are happening with the parks and things like that. So, I'd hate to put this, you know, on the table and just discuss it, decide at a later date to do it. I'd like to do at least the first reading tonight, and then we have further, we can have further discussion between now and the next meeting, right, when we do the second reading.
Okay. Alderman Milner?
If we, if we table it, it can be tabled and then changed. If we take it to a second reading, it stays in its correct, in its current format. Is that correct, without any being able to make changes to it?
Yeah, that's right.
So, if we table it, we can still change things on it and/or dates or whatever, but if we just simply take it to first reading tonight with second coming, it stays in the format?
It would. We would just do a second reading at a future meeting.
Alderman Turner, did you have a question?
I said, I mean, so, during the work session, the park board has not been contacted yet about it?
We agreed in, in the work session at the, at a last meeting that Grant would approach the park board at the next park board meeting after this ordinance was passed.
Okay, because I thought he was going to contact him individually before.
I thought the same thing.
I mean, that's, because I believe that's what he said.
And that's fine, but again, that wasn't going to happen until after this ordinance was passed, right?
But then, but also with Alderman Davidson, I mean, if we table it, if we need to tweak and make changes, we can. Once we have a first reading, it's set in stone, we'd have to start over.
I mean, there could be a motion to amend. You can always amend in between the two.
Right, right.
Yeah, whether it's while it's on the table or between readings.
So, it's not really set in stone?
Right, without.
Is there something in particular that you would want to see changed, Alderman Turner?
Not me necessarily. I'm just.
Alderman Milner, was there something specific you wanted to see changed?
I'm just, I, I want to give Grant a chance to talk to the board. I also want, yeah, a little feedback would be good. I, I know this needs to be done, and I know the format that we're going in is the correct format to take it into. We just know what's going to happen when it does, and I think we just, I think we still need to talk through this just a little bit. I, I really would like to see, and I don't know how Grant feels about that, I would like for them to be heads up on this before we do this. That's just my personal opinion. Because again, like I, like we talked about in the last meeting, we, we are going to give everyone an opportunity to refile for that position. But I'd still like, I just, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the blind siding of it. I'd like to see the conversations happen before.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's very valid. We've talked it through. We know where we want to go with it.
Right.
We're going to go that way, but I would, I would like to see that happen first.
Okay. Alderman Davidson, are you looking at me like you have?
Well, no, just briefly. I, I want, I want Grant and I want the board to know that I completely support the end result.
Absolutely.
I can, there's, there's no question. It's the process of getting there is my, is my question and my problem, so.
Okay. Alderman Mills, did you have any?
Well, the, the process with the first and second reading with any ordinance is to give the community, or in this case, these people, time to react to what we're doing. And so, any ordinance that we do, if we don't suspend the rules, we're, we're giving the citizens of the community time to react.
Correct.
And they can ask for time at the next meeting if they want to be in public hearing and have their, their say. They can, park board, I'm sure, could send it back through Grant, questions and answers, and, and we can prolong it at that time, if necessary, the second reading or arrange any amendments or whatever. But the process of an ordinance with two readings is to give whoever this is going to affect a period of time to react and, and ask questions.
Correct.
So, to me, it's the proper course.
Okay.
And that's what I was going to say. That's what I was getting at, because that's basically what Grant's asking for, right, is just the single reading. He didn't want us to push it to a second reading tonight, so that he had the chance to do that. Is that correct, or am I mistaken on that?
No, I think that's correct.
Okay. Because like you said, that was my understanding, so that gives it the opportunity for discussion or people to understand what's going on and know what we're trying to do here, for sure, so.
I have a question.
Okay, Alderman.
If we do the first reading, and then next Tuesday is the park board meeting, so you would be discussing this with them at that time?
Correct. Yeah, that was the thought process. So, tonight we could do the first reading, next week we have a park board meeting, we can bring it up, because that way it shows that, you know, the board is in favor of the change, and then I can present it to them if they have any questions, concerns. Then we can bring it back, you know, those questions, concerns, or give them opportunity to even come to the next meeting.
That's what I was going to ask, if they would be allowed to come here and ask these questions?
Sure, public meeting.
Okay, okay.
If we can, if we can still make amendments to it during that two-week process, I'm fine with that, and I'll rescind my second motion to table.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Reese, I didn't get to you. Do you have a comment?
No.
All right. Okay, so, we had a motion to table it, but the second has been removed.
Without a second, that motion would fail. And I'll just add that the practical effect is the exact same whether you motion it or wait for a second. The only change would be if you tabled it, we'd have to make a motion to take it from the table at the next meeting it's heard at. So, it's really the end result. It's the same, amendments can be made.
Right.
All right, so now we're back to Council Bill 34 with its first reading.
I believe I already, I read it once, yes.
You did already read, okay. All right, so, we've had good discussion, and at this point, I'll entertain a motion on Council Bill 34.
What's the motion for here?
First reading.
For the first reading? Okay, I'm, make a motion.
To suspend.
No, no.
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 That's why I had to be careful what I was saying there.
Your motion's only for first reading.
Okay, that's what I'm making a motion for, first reading.
Okay, so I have a motion for the first reading.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, so, a motion then from Alderman Zaring, with a second from Alderman Franklin. And a roll call, please.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll bring Council Bill 30 before back for its second reading at our next meeting. Anything else on that, Council?
No.
Okay, Council Bill 35.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, authorizing the City of Harrisonville, Missouri refunding and improvement certificates of participation Series 2023, and authorizing and approving certain documents in connection with the delivery of the certificates.
Joey, there you are. I didn't see you. You were hiding behind a bin.
So, this is a new addition. A week ago, I had a new hip put in.
My cane is bigger than yours.
I'm a little jealous, saw this walking sticks. So, tonight's ordinance is moving forward on the COP TDD project. It's a parameter ordinance which gives the authority for us to go-to market for the bond issue. I have set the parameters at where they are with a 1% growth in our sales tax, and the market has improved every week since the last time I was here, and so I don't suspect we'll be at that 1% level. I suspect it's going to be, the sales tax will have to grow at a lesser level. The interest rate I have set is at a higher rate, so I'm being very conservative in this approach. But, but tonight, that's what we're doing, is authorizing it to move forward. Between now and then, we will have to meet with the, with the TDD board to also have them agree and be on board.
Okay.
But this is exactly what we talked about two weeks ago.
Okay, excellent. Well, that's good news.
Yeah, it's, I wish I had a really good explanation of why, in the turmoil, the bond market has gotten better, but I can't give you a good reason. It's, interest rates keep going down, and I don't know why. I don't think they should be, but you stopped asking my opinion, I guess, 30 years ago.
Questions for Joey. Seeing no questions?
I do have Dave Martin, who is Gilmore Bell. He is our bond counsel on the whole transaction. I did, if there's any legal questions, I would quickly throw them over there.
Okay. All right, I'll rephrase my question then. Any questions for Joey or for David from members of the board? Alderman Mills?
Just to tell the board, I discussed this with legal, and I believe I'll abstain on this vote strictly because the interaction with the TDD. But with the advent of enhancing the TDD, which enhances sales, which enhances the sales tax, I'm anticipating my sales will go up, and that benefits me. So, I will abstain.
Okay, good. All right, so, I'm ready to entertain a motion for this ordinance.
Make a motion to suspend the rule and take it to a second reading?
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff, with a second from Alderman Zaring, to suspend the rule on Council Bill 35 and advance it to a second reading. A roll call, please.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is abstaining.
Thank you. Second reading.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, authorizing the City of Harrisonville, Missouri refunding and improvement certificates of participation Series 2023, and authorizing and approving certain documents in connection with the delivery of the certificates.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is abstaining.
Thank you. Council Bill 35 is approved and becomes ordinance 3642. Alderman, the committee reports. Alderman Dorhoff.
Thank you. And I will point out, this is going remarkably smoothly. It never goes this smoothly, and so I'm expecting something to happen. There's a great many steps between now and closing, but my fingers are crossed. Everything's going very well.
Good, good.
You cross your fingers, I'll keep praying.
Take care of that hip. All right, Alderman, the committee reports. Alderman Dorhoff.
Madam Mayor, it's been a pleasure serving with you the last four years. You will be greatly missed. You've done a great job for the City of Harrisonville, and I can't believe four years has gone by as quick as it has.
It has gone by.
Look forward to the next four years.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Reese?
Well said. Well said. Of course, we're going to miss seeing you up there. I think many of us on this board have depended on you very heavily for us to do the right thing and to guide us in the right direction, and I think you've done that, and I appreciate that. I think Harrisonville appreciates that. So, good luck and have fun in your retirement.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Alderwoman. Alderwoman Franklin?
Yes, I echo what they have said. We certainly will miss you, and you have done an amazing job while you have been here, and we have been very fortunate to have you, so. And I echo with her to enjoy your retirement and keep the first dude in line.
That's a full-time job right there.
Of course, it's your time.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Zaring?
Yep, I'm going to echo the same thing. Thank you for everything. You've been, what, the last four years as mayor, but how long were you actually an Alderman before that?
Four years.
So, again, you know, eight years of service to the city, always engaged, always looking for people to, and encourage people to get involved. You've been awesome, definitely going to be missed, and hopefully you're not going too far. Maybe some board positions or something might come open or something, so. That's, that's my biggest concern, is finding people to fill board positions, so. But the, along with that, I do want to say, you know, we have people appointed to the boards. It's amazing. I think just about everybody out here has served on boards or served in this community somehow, some way, and it's awesome. It's amazing to see how many people will actually volunteer their time for the betterment of their city. You've done that for eight years. Again, well-deserved and great job. Can't say enough of where you've brought the city to at this point, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Alderman Milner?
Well, I'm just going to still tell you I'm not happy about it, but it wasn't my choice. We had some, we had some good battles sitting over in those seats over there, and I've had some good years, so, good luck. I'm glad we at least are having an excellent choice for a second, but it will be missed.
Thank you. Alderman Turner?
Yep, same. Happy retirement. Wish you the best, you know. Eight years is a long time up here on the board, and we've all got a little gray since.
Yeah, we are a little gray, aren't we, Matt? Yeah, we are a little brighter, aren't we, Matt?
But, we'll miss you, and, and be, might, got some big shoes to fill.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Mills?
Yes, kadoos, Your Honor. Ever since you came to this town, actually, for your service, thank you. First lady on the wall over there, quite an honor.
Yep.
All right. So, yes, best of luck in, in your future endeavors there.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Everybody vote tomorrow. Marcy, Marcy, good luck.
Thanks.
There you go.
You're the only one.
And a kadoo, and a kadoo to the Chief of Police there on some work a week ago Saturday. That's all I'll need to say. Excellent, thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davidson?
What else do you say? Thank you for your support, thank you for your guidance. You've been a tremendous asset to this city, and not only I, but I think the rest of this board and the rest of the city has a lot to be thankful for that you were the mayor the last four years. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your service, obviously, and I wish you the very best in, in whatever comes forward up for you, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Alderman. Thank you all for your very kind words. I will just say that the things that have been accomplished in this city in the last eight years, four years as alderman and four years as mayor, have come as a result not of my individual efforts, but the efforts of the people that are sitting around me and the people who are sitting in front of me. You know, when I ran my campaigns, I, I utilized green as my campaign color, both of my campaigns. And I did that because I wanted my spoken and my unspoken message to the citizens of Harrisonville to be that Harrisonville could and would grow. To me, green is a sign of growth. And I knew that with the, the right staff and with the right board, that this city would and could grow, and in doing so, would provide a better quality of life for the people who call Harrisonville home and for businesses who have a storefront here in Harrisonville. And I think as you reflect back on what has happened in the last four years and what's going to happen in the next four or five years, we've accomplished that. And so, I thank you for, for doing like Moses in the Bible. You held my arms up, you supported me in getting the things done that we all knew needed to happen. And we've now removed the negative influence from this city, and now we've changed the rhetoric. We now talk about the future, the good things that are coming, the good things that are happening. But I take no credit for it, because I could not have done it without you. So I wanna thank you, I wanna thank Brad for the fine staff that he has built to be able to enact the things that this board decides. And I wanna thank you for your support for the city, for your love for the city, and I just, I'm so grateful to have had you all in my life. So thank you. God bless each and every one of you. God bless the staff, Brad, God bless you, Alex, God bless you, and first and foremost, God bless Harrisonville. Thank you all, appreciate it. All right, Brad, City Administrator report.
Follow that.
Yeah, that's pretty, that's a bad setup right there. Everyone remembers Wednesday night, we had the, the, the board special meeting. It will not be in city council chambers. We had, we realized, thankfully, right, Daniel realized today, that there's court that night, so it'll be at the community center. So it'll be six o'clock at the community center. Daniel's gonna be calling tact and all the taxing entities. Did you hear that, Paul?
I don't really hear anything.
Okay. That we're switching it over, because when he went and asked Michelle how big a deal was it to move the court night, the look on her face and the blood that drained from her face, he knew that that was not an option. So, that'll be at the community center this Wednesday night at six o'clock. And then, we have the brush drop, drop off coming up on the 21st and 22nd of this month. The, as you all know, the farmer's market and junk truck events are beginning to, to start as well. We've had the Ash Street, Ash Street, Culvert Town and Creek Bridge Channel Improvements, RFP. Staff selected the reassurance infrastructure consultant for the engineers for that project, so we're looking forward to getting that project going. The RFQ for the owner's engineer, staff received two proposals for that, and we were going through that to make sure the board understands the owner's engineer is the engineering group that will be our advocate, that makes sure that everything's being done, making sure that the monies and the federal regulations and the federal monies and state monies and everything that's involved with the project is being adhered to and being met. So there'll be, that's why we call it the owner's, the owner's engineer for that. This wouldn't be an engineer group that would be working for the contractor. The Lake Harrisonville, Lake Harrisonville Intake Riser Structure and Outfall Project and the grant program is currently being reviewed by the City Attorney's Office, but we're looking forward to that project getting completed and moving forward on. And then, with the, I just lost my page. All right, wait. The chief, Fire Chief Sullivan, they had a, a cut, their color guard for the first time in Harrisonville participated down in Jeff City this past week.
Will be.
Will be. And that's a big honor to be able to go down there, and Harrisonville's never participated in that before. So, it's good that Harrisonville be represented down in, in the capital for that project as well. And with that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Brad.
And I, can I add now my personal?
Sure.
I think our first conversation was four hours, but we actually met each other seventeen years ago. I was a new city administrator in Missouri, and I was dealing with a flood event, and everybody was being mean to me, and no state agency would respond, and DNR told me, is it polluting the stream? We don't care. And I said, are you changing the channel? We don't care. And I couldn't get anyone to come in and help. And that's the first time I met Judy. And she stuck in my mind from then on, 'cause you know when you're hanging on to a rope and everybody's eating at you, you remember those that throw you a life preserver along the way. And so, I've always remembered her as through that. And then when I seen in the papers and stuff, oh, she's an alderman now, and she's in Harrisonville, and, and watched her maneuver through the city here. And then when she became mayor and had talked to me about Harrisonville, she is a wonderful salesman, and she loves this community, and she is always optimistic for the potential. And she sold me right off the bat. I always was interested in Harrisonville, but she really sold me on it. And it's been a joy working with her. It's been a joy working with someone that's honest and forthright, and man, is she smart in how she looks at things and approaches things. And I've had the pleasure of working for female mayors and male mayors, and I told her, she by far in the six mayors that I've had to work for, the best all around. Each always had their strengths, but I really never found a weakness that she has. She's very strong in, in every area, and very, very proud to watch her in the community and when she's up speaking on behalf of all of us on all the events. And so, I thank you for all the support you've given me and all the atta boys, and as well as You Can Do It, and, and always backing the changes, 'cause we've made a lot of changes and tough changes, and she's always been there as a strength for the community. I'm looking forward to working with Mike, and, and think that it's wonderful that I still think, I tell people I've never worked for a bad mayor, and I think that'll continue on with Mike, and so I'm appreciative of that. So, thank you again. Thank you again for all that you've done. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Brad. You know, probably one of the greatest thrills that I have in knowing that Mike Zaring is going to be your next mayor is the fact that his father-in-law, former mayor Chuck Jones, was one of my very dearest friends and one of my very dearest mentors through my, through my years on the board. When Chuck would call me, he would always say, hey, kid, how are you doing? Well, when you're my age and you have gray hair like this and somebody calls you kid, they're automatically your favorite person. Dennis, question from the media?
Well, I think it's really unfairly approached to relax.
Do we wanna give you the microphone? Okay.
I have no questions, but I echo the sentiments of everyone. It's been a wonderful four years. You've made my life incredibly boring.
We've been down some roads together, haven't we, Dennis? Yeah, yeah.
And I'm really glad that you're bored.
Yeah. Any other comments? Any comments from anyone else in the room? Please remember to vote tomorrow. You know, there are important things on the ballot. You have a very talented, experienced alderman running for Ward Two. I will unashamedly endorse her and ask you to support her at the polls tomorrow. I also would ask you to make, make use of the information that Daniel has posted on Facebook this week about the sales tax issue. That is of prime importance to municipalities, and it's especially important to this city. That produces revenue that, that this city will be able to utilize to provide enhanced police and fire and public safety services to our community without having to tax our citizens. I think it's, to me, it's like a user tax. People who use the pot should pay for the pot. So, that being said, I would certainly encourage anyone in the room and anyone who's watching this on YouTube to make sure you vote tomorrow and that you endorse the sales tax increase on recreational marijuana. That being said, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you all tonight for your very, very kind words. They mean a lot to me. And I want you to know the city is in very good hands with Brad and Mike and this board and this staff. I walk away confidently and, and know that the things that we've started will continue. So thank you again. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I thought you all wanted to stay all night.
Second.
A motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Milner to adjourn my very final Board of Aldermen meeting. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, good night.